Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Dennison for our city council meeting this fifteenth day of September 2025. And it's our honor tonight to have Reverend Drew Svenson, pastor of the First Christian Church, to come forward and offer our invocation. If you'll stand, please.
Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we come to you with much gratitude and thanks for the freedoms and blessings we enjoy in this country and in this great state. And thank you for the grace you've given us here even in the city. Thanks for the protection and blessing you put upon us. And we thank you for those who serve in our community, for first responders, firefighters, local law enforcement, the nurses and doctors, and those who care for us many times on our worst days. May your blessing be upon them and their families. Thank you for the men and women who serve on our council, Lord. Bless their families for the time that they sacrifice away from them. Give them wisdom and discernment, and may our decisions made each month, Lord, bring glory and honor to you. May they be done in such a way that is honorable in our community, and may we be a community that truly cares for others and loves one another well. We pray all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Emily Agins, Department Director of Communications and Marketing is here, and if you'll lead us in our pledge of allegiance, in our Texas pledge.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Under item two of our agenda tonight, I'd like to invite Chief Jackson to come forward and talk about a Dennison Fire Rescue Lifesaver Recognition. Greetings.
Greetings. Good to see you. Here's a young man and his family.
And his family. Welcome, everybody.
Yes. Let's see, so I can see what I'm reading. Today, we gather to honor an extraordinary individual whose quick thinking and selfless courage saved a life. On July 25th, 2025, at approximately 11:20 a.m., a medical emergency unfolded at a Dennison manufacturing facility. A worker was gravely injured, caught in a drill press, suffering severe lacerations, compound fractures, and life-threatening bleeding. In that critical moment before Station Two units could arrive, one man stepped forward, Hadley Shepherd. Without hesitation, Hadley used his own shirt to create a tourniquet, skillfully applying pressure with a tool to stop the bleeding. He stayed by the injured worker's side, offering calm reassurance and keeping him stable until their help arrived. The patient was airlifted to a North Texas trauma hospital, and our crews unanimously agreed, without Hadley's swift and heroic actions, the outcome could have been tragic. Hadley's bravery embodies the spirit of community and selflessness we hold dear. For his remarkable act, it is my privilege to present Hadley Shepherd with the Dennison Fire Rescue Lifesaver Award. This honor reflects the respect and gratitude of our entire department and community. Additionally, Hadley will be recognized with the American Red Cross Lifesaver Award at a later ceremony, further celebrating his heroic contribution. Hadley, your courage saved a life, and we are all deeply grateful. Congratulations, and thank you for being a true hero.
And the second item tonight is a proclamation for National Night Out. And who's going to join me up here? Okay, okay. Welcome, welcome both of you. Welcome, sir. All right, whereas a proclamation for the City of Dennison, whereas a National Night Out is an annual community-building campaign that promotes police, community partnerships, and neighborhood camaraderie with all of our neighborhoods, and make them safer, more caring places to live. It is our chance to shake hands with our police officers, high five our firefighters, and say thank you to all the folks who protect and service each and every day. And whereas, the City of Dennison recognizes the importance of fostering strong relationships between our law enforcement, fire department, city staff, and the residents they protect and serve. And whereas, National Night Out provides an opportunity for citizens to interact with first responders, strengthen neighborhood spirit, and send a unified message that crime will not be tolerated in our community. And whereas, the event also builds trust, promotes awareness of crime prevention strategies, and enhances the quality of life in Dennison through positive interactions and shared community pride. And whereas, by sharing food, fun, and fellowship, we strengthen the bonds that make our neighborhoods caring places to live and raise families. And whereas, the City of Dennison is committed to supporting the activities that bring out residents together in friendship, respect, and cooperation. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowley, Mayor of the City of Dennison, do hereby proclaim October 7th, 2025, as National Night Out. Gentlemen? All right, congratulations, everyone, on National Night Out. Citizens may speak on action items this evening. As listed on the agenda, a request to speak card should be completed and returned to the city clerk upon arrival, and prior to the council meeting reaching the public comments section of the agenda. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes unless otherwise required by law. Comments related to the public hearings listed below, if any, will be heard when that specific hearing starts. And I have four cards this evening, Kurt Chakowski, Lee Thornton, and Leighton Privet. And so we'll call on you here shortly. The next item is our consent agenda, item number four. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Councilman Thomas, a second by Councilman Thorne.
That's Redwine.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry. All right, correction to Councilman Redwine. And is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item five is the public hearings of the meeting. And the first up is Diane York. She will receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance for voluntary annexation of approximately 0.644 acres in the Daniel C. Shelp survey abstract number 1097, Grayson County, Texas, commonly known as Iron Ore Creek Cemetery.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. First item I have for you tonight is a voluntary annexation petition by the City of Dennison to bring the subject property consisting of approximately 0.644 acres into the Dennison city limits. The subject property is commonly known as the Iron Ore Creek Cemetery, which has been deemed a historic Texas cemetery by the Texas Historical Commission. And the City of Dennison has recently taken control of this property in order to maintain and care for the historical cemetery. In addition to this voluntary annexation application, the City of Dennison has also submitted a zoning application, which to initially zone the subject property, which is a companion item on this agenda. Staff does recommend approval of this request, and I'm present for any questions you may have.
All right, any questions of council? If not, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Are there any citizens here to speak for or against this matter? Okay, Mr. Kurt Chakowski, please step forward. Give us your name and address, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilpeople and staff. My name is Kurt Chakowski. I live at 1419 West Woodard here in Dennison. I come to you today as the Grayson County Historic Commission's historic marker chairperson. In front of all of you, you should have our pamphlet that shows you 199 historic places and markers in Grayson County, 44 of them, which are in Dennison. A piece of paper marks page 70, which is where we would like to change the status of Iron Ore Cemetery from just merely a historic Texas cemetery designation to actually put a historic marker up there. The designation happened in 2010. City took ownership of the maintenance of the cemetery, and there was a Dennison historic marker placed on the top of the hill behind Texas Medical Center, where the cemetery's historic site is located. At that time, Mayor Gott led a thing, led a ceremony where councilperson Obie Greenleaf and councilperson Hander provided the historic background, and then talked about the importance of this cemetery to the city. This effort, three years in the making, is to put an actual Texas historic marker, and it will go directly opposite of the Dennison city marker right by the entrance of the Iron Ore Cemetery arch. So I come to you speaking for you both this time for the annexation, as well as the rezoning, and the, should you approve it, there is an invitation for you to be there on the 27th of September when we have the unveiling of the marker. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here, and thanks for your interest. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of or against this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Back to council. Any questions or comments from council? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance annexing the subject property.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Massey, a second from Councilman Thomas. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ms. York, welcome back for item B in public hearings.
Thank you, sir. Now that we've annexed the subject property, we need to zone it. So as I mentioned, the City of Dennison has also submitted a initial zoning application for the subject property. Council just approved to be annexed. And staff, along with our legal team, is recommending to initially zone the subject property to the SF-20 Single Family Residential District. This does comply with the future land use plan, and staff does recommend approval of the request. And the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of the request at their meeting held on September 9th. I'm present for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? If not, this is a public hearing. Anyone that chooses to speak in favor of or against this item, you're welcome to do so. Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, move forward. Any other questions or comments from council? If not, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance zoning the subject property to the SF-20 Single Family Residential.
A second.
I have a motion by Councilman Thomas, a second by Councilman Redwine. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And we move to item C. That's probably why most of you are here. We welcome you all. And Ms. Alsaba, if you could please come up and give us a report, hold a discussion, and public hearing, and take action on ordinance adopting a City of Dennison budget for fiscal year October 1, 2025, ending September 30, 2026, appropriating funds for the various funds and purposes of such budget.
Good evening. I present the fiscal year, this evening, I'm here to present the fiscal year 26 budget for adoption. As you know, the budget is funded primarily through property tax. And although our property tax rate has not yet been adopted, state law requires that we adopt our budget before we adopt our tax rate. This budget being presented is based on our current tax rate of 0.712034. So in other words, there is no tax increase built into this budget being presented. Should a different tax rate be adopted this evening, we will bring back an amended budget for council to approve at the next meeting based on the new tax rate and recommendations. So on this slide, you can see that for the general fund, we were able to meet our 60 days of minimum for fiscal year 26. This required strict budgeting and minimal approvals of requests. The top increases built into the general fund are shown here. A few that I want to mention in this budget, it includes a one-time payment to staff, 2% of salaries in lieu of COLAs. Also, we've added $33,000 to our contingency account. If you recall during our budget workshop, I mentioned the importance of the having, of having the contingency account, and how each year we've had to chisel away from that budget. And it's important that we have that to preserve our days of reserve. Our balance in the contingency with this increase will still be less than one day of reserve. You will also see an increase for TERS contributions, debt payments, property and liability insurance. And these are all arranged in order from high to low based on the dollar amount. Here is a slide of our TASWA fund. This fund is primarily funding, the financing for various equipment for various divisions. And that would include a refuse division, parks, streets, cemeteries, and a few more. We anticipate fiscal year 26, the ending balance to be, in this fund, to be $757,000. And here we have our street fund. It is funded primarily through tax dollars transferred from our general fund and interest earnings. We are estimating to have an ending balance of $80,000 fiscal year 26 year end. This fund is also funded through street bonds that are issued. Our last issuance was in 2020 for $7.2 million. Other non-operating funds also help to support our needs, including our general capital fund, our court, technology, and security fund. We have TERS HOT Fund, we have our parks fund, and we also have our CDBG funds, which are used to, used on our street loan repayment. If you recall, we had a loan years ago to help with street payments. And also, emergency, CDBG also supports our emergency rehab projects for our citizens. Now, the next three slides show our historical sales tax revenue, our property tax basis, and our permits issued, and how they've trended over the past 10 years. You can see that the growth on all three of these is at an all-time low. The utility fund is projecting well below our 60-day minimum. We are monitoring this fund closely, and we will keep council updated. Top increases for the utility fund include debt payments for our issuances that are needed for our CIP infrastructure projects, followed by engineering review and inspections. Again, chemical supplies has been a large increase this budget year and the, for the upcoming budget. For car convenient fees, we have increased our convenience fee to our customers to help offset the cost or to offset the loss. We've also moved away from the merchant provider that our software recommends that we use as an alternative to lower some fees. So hopefully, we'll see a results of that in the next couple of months. We just made that transition a few weeks ago. And that concludes my presentation on the budget, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, Ms. Lori, does that budget consider any kind of a tax increase?
No, it does not.
There is no tax increase in the budget you presented?
Correct, correct. We have to adopt our budget before a tax increase, or before a tax rate. And therefore, it has to be the same as the previous tax rate, the current tax rate.
Any questions from council?
Can you go back to your first page?
This one?
Maybe it's the second page. Where am I looking?
Perhaps this one?
Yes, ma'am. So we go from the general fund budget for the overtime line, item 325 has been amended to 375 this year. When I'm looking at the original that we pushed out, it looks like this year we were at 710 in the general fund and projected cost by the end of the year. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so in the initial suggestions to council that we have overtime expenses we need to budget for, how did you cut those costs? Are we just kicking that down the road so that we've got?
We're just kicking that down the road. Each year, we add to that budget. We're trying to build it up to where that cost actually is. But we don't have the funding, so we rely on savings in other areas that will hopefully make up for that, or we may have to come back for a budget adjustment.
Okay. That seems a little slippery to do it that way, to shave it now on the expectation that we're going to have to come back later. What's our chance that we have to come back later?
We'll know in a couple of weeks. Your end is approaching for the current year, and that'll kind of give us a picture of what we're looking at for next year. The bottom line is, we just don't have the funding to sufficiently budget that line.
That's not an answer. My wife would accept it. My house. So where does it come from if we fail to have enough money? We got to come back to citizens, or we pull it out of another bucket?
A lot of times, we'll have vacancies that will help offset that. If we have vacant positions, that money will go to cover that cost. So that, and then you have vacancies in other divisions as well that are in the fund balance to help cover that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Can you go to the utility budget real quick? Maybe this was explained. I just didn't hear or understand. Next one. The increase in fire hydrant maintenance, I mean, it's, the percentage is high, but it's, I mean, overall budget's not a lot. But why the significant increase in fire?
We need to maintain or monitor our fire hydrants to maintain our ISO rating. If you recall, we achieved the rating of one, which is the highest rating that a city can achieve. And we need to put, to maintain that rating, we need more inspections of our fire hydrants.
Okay, so we had the rating, but we did, it looked, but our cost was only 13,000s when we, and we received that rating. All right, so, so to maintain it, why does it, why does it mean we have to spend almost three times as much?
I'd have to defer to the fire chief for that. I don't actually, I'm not involved in the maintenance of those.
Before, when we got, we were graded, it's on a three-year scale, and the hydrants hadn't been, there was no maintenance to them. So we just had a partial, you know, for like a year. So we only got a very minute credit for it. So this will increase it by having a full three years for the next grading period. So we'll get full credit for it.
Okay, got you. Okay, that makes sense.
Does that make it a one-time expense, then?
No, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing expense.
Is this done by us or done by outside?
It's done by us.
Middle of both.
Okay.
Can you?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. What are the questions? All right, this is a, thank you, Ms. Alsaba. If you'd like to have a seat, we'll, we'll open the public meeting at this time. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of or against the budget? I have two cards here. I have one from Leighton Privet, and I have one from Lee Thornton. And remind you that the budget we are going to vote on is a zero new taxes budget. So, Mr. Thornton, if you'd like to come forward, you can speak first.
For the record, I'm Lee Thornton, 815 Waterloo Lake Drive, Dennison, Texas. First of all, I appreciate and thank you all for serving our community. And I know this is the most difficult decision typically of the year. It's what I do with my clients every day. Got to look at their budget, what they're taking in, what they're spending, so on and so forth. I'm speaking primarily because of the difference in the budgets presented on 826 and 99. And I know that much deliberation and effort was put into this, to these budgets. Worked with Ms. Alsaba on the Fireman's Pension Fund Board. And so I'm very familiar with actuero studies, monies in, monies out. The fact that it comes from taxpayers is, is number one. So I see this as two things primarily, the budget and the consideration of a tax increase consideration. So because I only have three minutes, I would simply say that this budget, I don't think adequately funds all of our city employees. The budget cuts were taken primarily from the fire department, which is an essential service that we, we have, and they have worked extremely hard to achieve that ISO level one rating, which attracts builders and developers like David Craig. And that would, this budget would not adequately fund that expansion that's coming. So.
You're talking about Preston Harbor?
Yes, Preston Harbor development. But not only that, 2% is good. However, inflation has been running higher than that in recent years. And we all know that we're all going to need more money in the future. And so inflation simply reduces that buying power. I'm really not opposed to the budget, as I am in favor of the previous budget submitted on 826. I believe the council has the opportunity in this next fiscal year to amend the budget if it's, if this is adopted. However, we don't know if that's going to take place. And if it does pass, I think a tax increase is necessary to fund our city employees and fund the expansion coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris Thornton. Okay, Leighton Privet, could you please give us your name and address for the record?
Leighton Privet, 202 North Front Street, Savoy, Texas. Good evening, council, I am the president of the Denison Firefighters Association. We have found that the budget posted on September 9th no longer reflects the plan for the acceptance of the SAFER grant that was present in the budget posted August 26th. SAFER grant is a federal grant which our department has applied for. This was done to ease the tax burden of the hiring of the personnel required for Station 4. Station 4 is required for the development of Preston Harbor. As council is aware, the awarding of this grant would constitute a roughly $6.5 million total savings to citizens. Our department recognizes this as a golden opportunity for present and future citizens as the question is not if those personnel are needed, but where the funding will come from. Although we are not guaranteed to be awarded this grant, we found it odd that this was originally budgeted for and now isn't. We are curious as to the reason why that amendment was made. As we've seen, we also found that the COLA and market adjustment package for all city employees originally in the August budget has been removed in this current budget. This package was built with the goal to retain and attract well qualified employees for the city. It is a need that was recognized by city leadership and would benefit, would greatly benefit the current and future workers citywide. This was originally budgeted for and funded using the TASSL fund. This left the door open for council to use the revenue from the proposed tax rate increase for streets and other projects which council gives direction for. We would ask that the making of this cut be reconsidered. We understand the desire to slim the budget and avoid a tax increase and we have worked hard as a department to do our part, but we do not wish to see that come at the cost of retaining and recruiting quality employees. This is something that many departments in the city already struggle with. It's also something Denison Fire has experienced a devastating effect in the past, seeing well over half our department and countless decades of experience go elsewhere. This greatly hurt our ability to serve our community and serves as a reminder of a history we do not wish to see repeated. Our mission is to provide citizens with the highest quality care and service possible because they deserve it. This requires us to be competitive with other cities, to acquire quality employees and retain the people that make us successful. With the removal of this adjustment, we will fall to being the lowest compensated of our peer cities who are agreed upon by council. This does not provide us with the ability to succeed in that mission and hinders our ability to provide the quality of service Denison deserves and expects. We need the support of our council, as do other city departments, to fulfill our commitment to our citizens. We recognize our greatest strength as our people and we would ask the council help us to preserve that strength.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item on the agenda? All right. If not, the public hearing is now closed. Comments from council, and I'd like to start if you don't mind. One of the things that we were looking at was to try not to burden the taxpayers with an additional increase. We, we taxed them six cents last year, which we hated to do, but that's, that's what we did last year. This year we're trying desperately not to raise the taxes. Now, what we understood and what the data that I was supplied with indicated that the SAFER grant could be rejected at this time and reapplied for. The whole issue on this matter is the advancement of the actual development. We had heard earlier that there should be some type of ribbon cutting in the spring, that has not happened. We now think that will happen this fall, but that ribbon cutting will be when the home builder begins to move forward with his projects. There are no homes out there right now and it's very unlikely that there would be any homes there before the end of next year. So we felt like that was one place that we could push that expense forward into next year or the year after, depending on when the construction actually gets there. I cannot tell you how much we appreciate the fact that the grant was applied for and that the city has a chance to save several million dollars. We just didn't, did not see, or I don't see how it fits as well in this budget as it could in a future budget. And to me, it's all about the timing of Preston Harbor and when they actually start building. What we do know is that Preston Harbor has pulled excavation permits from the city, so we know that part, that part is moving forward for the excavation. But we do not have a good feel on when housing will actually begin and so that's the reason that we chose to push this back just a little bit. Has nothing to do with, with our departments, it has, what it has to do with is our funding and trying to be as good as we can to the citizens that pays, that pay property taxes in Denison, Texas. Does, did that make sense? Does that make sense? It's, it's not that we don't want to do it, it's, we desperately want to keep ISO one and we desperately cannot thank each and every one of you who work in fire rescue for what you have done for our city and what you do every, every day and every night for our city. We could not do without you, but it's not, you know, the SAFER grant is based on when actual activity is projected to begin at Preston Harbor. Any other comments from council? All right, and thank you very much for your comments on that, we sincerely appreciate that.
I've got a question for you and I don't know if this is a chief question or for you. It looked like the second year carry cost on that was going to basically double the expenditure, so if Preston Harbor hasn't shown up yet, then now instead of a $600,000 cost to the city, we now have a 1.2 the following budget year and ever increasing. I would absolutely support every fireman making a quarter million dollars a year, I think you deserve it, but I can't, I can't, I can't get there, right? So if Preston Harbor fails to develop and we have no lever to force moving forward, then next year we got a $600,000 shortfall on a bunch of guys. So the question I have for you is it looks like the fire department's overtime budget this year was $780,000 by the time it was all sorted out? If I, if, that may not all be firemen, trying to make sure I've got that right. So there was a shortfall. I called a bunch of firemen and I asked them, what happens if we hire a whole bunch, 21 new guys and overtime is no longer necessary because we've got extra staffing? And I realize you can only have overtime if you're at the level that needs for that particular placement, right? And a lot of them said, that's how they make ends meet, that working that overtime is how they, they fund their families. So I'm, I'm stuck on a decision tree between if we hire a bunch of guys that may not be necessary and now we've got citizens who have to pay a burden for that, love to have extra 21 guys, I think I'm safer if I do. But what about the other guys who are already here? And I see most of your department looks like they're here. If they don't get any overtime anymore, what happens to your staff then? Do they, does that create an unintended consequence for your team?
No, I would say that the, the additional personnel would decrease the overtime fatigue that we currently have now. We actually call for overtime less than we really could as far as where we put our staffing level. Our staffing level doesn't even actually meet the NFPA standard that's adopted as far as having four and a half trucks and two and a half ambulants. It would also greatly increase.
My apologies, chief, I don't know if I was supposed to direct that to you.
No, it would also greatly increase, it would also greatly increase these guys' ability to rotate on and off the ambulance. I understand it's part of their job, but they don't get to see that fireside very often because we don't have the level of staffing needed to, to facilitate that rotation on and off the ambulance. Also, the, that's where that market adjustment came in, like I said, it's nothing against, I understand the city doesn't have money, we're not begging for, you know, a tax increase or anything like that, but the unfortunate reality that we're in is that it's an extremely competitive service, the fire services. We have slacked greatly as a department really over the last three years while everybody else around us has gone up greatly. So that's kind of the, the predicament that we're in and we're trying to get these guys, you know, a better, a better way of retention and everything like that and it's just unfortunately it's hard to do without that.
Understood. Chief, I do have kind of the follow up question for you then is if, if I remember my numbers right, it's about a $600,000 first year cost from the city and it's supported?
577,000 and change.
And so would that offset somewhere close to dollar for dollar in the overtime? Those are all new guys onboarding, right?
Pretty close. At 577, it's because the SAFER grant pays 75% the first year, 75% the second year.
Okay.
And then it'll pay 35% the third year. And the fourth year is when the city takes and by that time Preston Harbor is going to be, is going to be rolling and we wanted to hire those 21 people to cut down on overtime and to get them trained, because everybody in the city are paramedics and it takes a while to get these people trained and all that kind of stuff. So this year you said that the overtime budget was 700 and something, the majority of that is FLSA, which has nothing to do, is under no control of us. With the fire department's schedule, the federal government with their, built in overtime, that's where that, that's where that comes from. That, that's nothing, our actual bud, our overtime budget, because when I first got here, it was all combined, I had them separated because I can't control FLSA. I can control, you know, overtime with staffing and sending people to train and stuff like that, so that, that 200, the FLSA I can't control. That 200,000, if we do not hire these 21 people, is going to be, don't hold me to this, it's going to be 400 to 500,000 dollars in overtime.
It sounds, it sounds like it's a safety issue.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a safety issue for my firefighters, it's a safety issue for the citizens because, as I said, the NFPA standard is we ride four up. We ride three up on two of our engines and we ride two up on one of our engines, which is criminal. It's setting the city up for failure. It's setting the city up for if something happens, somebody's got, a lawyer's going to jump all over it and the city's going to cost the city a lot of money. And I don't want to stand in front of somebody, one of our family members and have somebody that's died and talk to them about, yeah, sorry, we just got to run two, two people on there, two people can't fight a fire. When that engine pulls up, they're just like, yep, there it is, you know, kind of deal. So it's like, you know, between a rock and a hard place, you know, I get to hard decisions and we're not, like I said, these guys work their butts off, kind of deal, working overtime and stuff like that and they would more want to see the people than overtime just lining their pockets. Kind of deal, don't get me wrong, money's good, like I said, and that, that 7.5% that was projected in the budget before, still wouldn't have put us, it'll put us middle of, probably middle of the pack if that, with the cities we're compared to. Now we're the lowest paid, we're an ISO one city with the lowest paid fire department.
Well, we, thank you for your comments, appreciate it. To me, the SAFER grant is a timing issue and so we, you know, we need to get a little further into the progress of Preston Harbor to know a little bit more of when that timing is to be.
Can I address what you said, we'll apply for it next year? FEMA probably won't be around next year. President Trump is trying to get rid of FEMA. It's, it's going to be a coin flip whether that grant's even funded for next year. So that's, if we don't get it, take it this year, if they offer it to us, I like our chances, we'll know either by tomorrow or the next Wednesday whether we get it or not. Before the end of the month, they have to let us know and everything because we got to apply for it again, kind of deal, it might not be there, kind of deal, there's thousands of fire departments that apply for these grants. 6.5 million dollars is a big chunk of money to get from the government, kind of deal and that, the overall, the three years, that saves our citizens $4 million. If something happens, we don't get that grant, somebody's going to be on the hook for 6.5 million dollars. So, that's, that's just information, I'm just giving you the information.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, I want to make sure that I'm real clear on, on my stance on this. I don't want to charge our citizens taxes when they are also living in an environment they are burdened to make ends meet, but that need not in any way diminish the respect I have for your office. My oldest sister was, was almost murdered in her house when somebody tried to burn the house down and those firemen are angels as far as I'm concerned. And once he got caught and put in prison, it was a countdown to the day he got out for the fear of somebody else trying to burn that house down again. And so I thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you do and the risks you take on my behalf. Same for all of you fellows over there, thank you for what you do. I would very much like to make sure that we get you guys funded to make it a place that you want to work and not to travel to a city like Frisco that doesn't treat their staff nearly as well as what I understand our culture is here. And I want to thank you, chief, for building a culture that supports the appreciation of the risks that you take and the, and the hard work you do. So please don't hear anything I say as a, I wouldn't love to give you that money, I just got to answer it to other people to find out whether or not they can afford it too, but that's, that's the job, right? That's what we got put up here to do. But chief, I think what I heard you say is if we get it, we may not get it again next year if we try. What is our timeline for delaying the, or how long is your onboarding going to take to consume that, our portion of the budget and when does the clock start on your two year payment?
If we were notified Wednesday officially, we have 30 days to hire the 21 people. No, I'm, no, I'm, I take that back, we have six months to hire those people. We have 30 days to accept it.
Can I ask you one more question, sir? If it came to one or the other, would your constituents appreciate more, 21 more brothers at arms in, in fighting these fires around our city or an increase in the COLA? And by the way, I'm from the private sector side, COLA is not a term that I get to hear very often. For me, it's either merit based or market based, so.
The, it's not, it's not a COLA for the fire department, it's a market adjustment. It's a comparison with our comparison cities.
Yeah.
Kind of deal, so it's, that's, it's not a cost of living, it's the, it's the market adjustment.
And my wife's a nurse, so she has had market rate adjustments a few times, I appreciate when that happens. My question is, if we get stuck as a city with a rock and a hard place, but when Preston Harbor doesn't get there, I think what I heard you say is we need those 21 guys now for what we have, or most of them, to help the safety of the team we have today, correct?
That would be probably the priority, yes.
Okay, so if we find out that Preston Harbor gets back on track and the economy improves, is that an exchange, is that a compromise that would work for your constituents? Would it work for you? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
That speaks for the guys out there, for the safety of the citizens and the safety of themselves and everything as far as the more money in their pockets. That's why I'm proud of them.
By the way, the, my sister's daughter is now 16 and is training to go into the fire department, so they, whoever picked her out of that fire made a difference in her life and so thank you.
All right, thank you, chief, appreciate you being here and thanks for your comments. Any other questions or comments from the council?
One of the things that I, I look at, you know, we have this ISO rating of one, it's, and it's something our city should be proud of, but at what point does the cost of having this one rating outweigh the savings that the city and the citizens can get from insurance and interest rates? And, and so I know we have our 60 days of reserve, which allows us to have better interest rates, I know we have this ISO rating as one, which allows our citizens to have potentially cheaper insurance rates. At what point does the expenses of this outweigh it? It, it is, and to your point Josh earlier, if you had to choose, would you rather have a one ISO rating or be able to fund these officers and potentially fund the market adjustments? Just want to throw that out there.
I think to his question, ISO doesn't mean anything to the citizens because last year all the hailstorms created an insurance rate adjustment that masked any savings, right? So it's hard to stand up to my neighbor or my wife and explain that we saved money last year. Is it the case that an ISO one rating means that your lives are safer as a consequence? Are the things that we do in the city better at making sure that when you go out on a fire, you're coming home to your family that night? I, I, sorry, chief, I'm, I'm asking, I was asking the, I was asking the men in blue behind you.
Yeah, it, it absolutely does. I mean, because those standards is what, is what I preach day in, day out. It's the Denison, I mean, the city of Denison standards, whether it's the Public Works or, you know, any of that, that's our standard, you know, kind of deal, as opposed to, we're average, let's just get by and stuff like that. It permeates through our training, permeates through the people we hire, the quality of people we hire. That's kind of a big, when you, for recruiting and, you know, retention and everything, we're not ISO one. We're the top 1% of every fire department in this nation, the city of Denison, 30,000 people, a one, you know, kind of deal, it's, it's like, oh my gosh, you know, kind of deal. When you said about, oh, the savings, well, there was a savings because we didn't have a one, it really would have went up, like I said, it kind of, it kind of offset it, didn't it? You know, kind of deal, so. And I think it's a, you're going to ask Tony, coffee's still in here, that it helps business, helps attract business, it helps, it really helped attract big business, because that's where you get the savings. Like, we won't get somebody like TI, but can you imagine how much they save? Like, we won't get somebody like TI, but can you imagine how much they save on their insurance rate with an ISO one as opposed to Sherman, an ISO two?
It's a recruitment tool for your hiring as well? For hiring your, your staff is, it's a recruitment tool?
Sure. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you again, Chief. Any other questions or comments from council?
Chief, would you think a salary and, and pay, you get your steps in, Chief.
Get your steps, come on.
We're pulling ahead with these...
He forgot his fit today, so he's not getting credit for it.
Yeah, wait a second.
Market, market adjustments, uh, salary, do you feel like that's a better recruitment tool than the ISO rating?
I'm going to be totally honest with you, yes. You know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here and paint a, a picture, of course, salary is a bigger, is a bigger recruitment and retention tool. Go it once, go it twice.
Is, are there reports that, uh, show the fatality rate or the injury rates at departments across the board and support, uh, the idea that an ISO one improves the outcomes for your staff?
Ooh, I don't know. I don't, I, I don't want to lie to you, I don't know if there's reports that support that. Um, you know, because we took a hit on the last grading, because we didn't have enough firefighters. We took a, I said, we made, we scored a ninety-two. We just got to score a ninety to get an ISO one. We scored a ninety-two. We took a hit on not having a training center, training field, took a hit on not having enough firefighters that respond. They'll, we took a little hit on hydrant maintenance, you know, stuff like that, that kind of stuff, and so, little increment hits. We can't stand to take any more little increment hits, if we want to keep our one. You know, kind of deal, but that's, 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 that's up to y'all. It's, I like, me personally, I like saying we're an ISO one. That means something. Can he speak?
My name's Kendall Shaw, I'm a, just a firefighter here at Denison. Uh, for the ISO standard question y'all asked, if there's any study that shows safety for victims or firefighters, uh, there's no direct correlation between ISO and safety, but staffing there is. Um, NIST, which is a huge, uh, kind of industry study, uh, they do lots of studies for the fire service, shows time and time again, three-man staffing blows two-man staffing out of water, four-man staffing is tenfold to two-man staffing. Our whole job is to not only help y'all, but protect ourselves, right? Um, I want to come home, so does everybody else. You can't really put a price on a life. I know we're talking budget, I know we're in between a rock and a hard place when it comes to money, I understand that, and there's decisions that have to be made. Um, but there's no amount of money that you could never put out there from a budget standpoint that is going to offset if we have the ability to save a life. Like, he was talking, one of our engines, we run two men out of that engine. If they show up on scene first, their initial response, they cannot even make an interior attack, there, it's impossible. So, if somebody is trapped, there's no way they can even make an interior attack with a hose line to try to make an attempt for that victim.
That's my station. I have literally sat in the front yard and watched houses burn, because I can't go inside, because it's just me.
Um, yeah, and then that's...
That is a life safety issue, not just for me, but for these people.
And, I know y'all are talking about funding and, like, the ability to, yes, we can reject the Safer Grant, um, and, like you said, there's a good chance that we don't ever get it again if we do get approved for it. On top of that, uh, apparatus and stuff like that are going up, an average of thirteen percent per year, our, obviously, our salaries are going to continue to go up, everything's going up, so, if we reject it now, even if you get it next year, there's still going to be an increase to the amount of money we're going to be paying then, and if we don't get it next year, if it's two years down the road, it's only going to grow, and we're just pushing, like you were talking about earlier with the, uh, earlier budget about kicking it down the road, you don't like that? I, I don't like us kicking y'all's safety and our safety down the road, because that's what it's directly affecting, and, uh, our whole job is to save life and property, and this is directly going to impact that, so...
All right, thank you.
Do we have any vacancies? Are we testing? What's our, what's the number of people responding?
We just, we just, we, we were too short, and we just hired two, they actually started today, the two new ones, so we just gave a test, and we have, now we have, after going through everything, we have thirty, twenty-nine people on our list now that are hirable. So, if we get, if we were to keep the grant and get it, that, we have people to hire right now, at least, that's, that's active, kind of deal, I mean, yeah.
So, how many tested?
Tested, um, fifty-four, fifty-four.
So, there's some interest.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, oh, Denison, Denison's names out there. I mean, that, you know, people, people ask us now how we do things, instead of us asking them, you know, how do y'all do it? They're asking us, well, you know, our reputation has gone, is, is up there now, not, not only here, but throughout the state.
So, what happens in the event that we don't get approved for this grant? What happens then?
Then we would have to put it in for, if it's there, you know, this, this funding is just, if we get it, but from every indication that I've got from our, um, consultant that helped us write the grant and all that kind of stuff, the people he knows and FEMA and everything, we have a good chance of getting it. And he don't, I mean, he goes, "I can't guarantee it," and he goes, "But in my experience, what he's heard, we have a good chance of getting it."
Fifty-five steps. Good job. All right, any other questions or comments from council? If not, uh, our job tonight is to set a budget, and, um, so, what we have been presented is a budget with a zero cent tax increase. What I believe, uh, we should do is consider the budget, and then I believe what we should consider after that is setting up some type of a task force to see, uh, if there are any other opportunities for, uh, moving things around in the budget without a tax increase. So, that would be, uh, I will, uh, promise to set up a tax, a task force to review the budget and see if there's any other opportunities for us. So, is there any other comments or questions from council? Is there a motion on the budget? Oh, let's see here. Yes, is there a motion on adopting the budget as presented by Ms. Osobod?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance adopting the City of Denison budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-five, and ending on September thirty, twenty twenty-six, and appropriating the funds for the various funds and purposes of such budget.
Is there a second?
Roll call.
That, uh, you, you mentioned having a task force, do we need to, oh, Julie, do we need to have that as a...
All right, there was a motion by Mayor Protem Adams, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thorne. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor? Oh, we're going to go to Ms. Chris for a roll call vote, please.
As I state your name, please say yes or no. Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Courtrite?
Yes.
Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Crowley?
Yes.
Councilmember Massey?
Nay.
Councilmember Redwine?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Nay.
All right, and the roll call is five to two in favor of adopting this budget. All right, so, we'll now move to item D. See report, hold discussion, conduct a public hearing, take action on an ordinance approving the assessment role as certified by the Board of View of Grayson County Appraisal District in the amount of two point seven seven nine one hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars, levying the ad valorem taxes on the City of Denison on all property, both personal and real, and the City of Denison for the year twenty twenty-five in the amount of zero point seven one two three four, for each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation, and providing for the apportionment of such ad valorem taxes. Ms. Osobod, welcome back.
Good evening. Um, as mentioned previously, by law, we're required to adopt the budget before our tax rate, and the budget that was just adopted was a zero cent increase, as you mentioned. Um, and, and as you saw, our costs have again increased significantly this year or for the upcoming budget, and tonight, council will have a difficult decision, uh, to decide if we maintain our current tax rate or, um, if we increase it in order to fund the needs of the city and staff. So, if we refer to the penny tax increase slide shown, um, this shows how each penny increase translates into funding our needs. Um, each penny increase will generate approximately two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in revenue. Um, if a tax increase is approved, council can consider these options as presented or give direction, um, as to how they would like to see the additional funding allocated. And this slide, uh, based on what is decided, the impact to our citizens will equate on average, um, on the average, uh, property from zero to a hundred and seven dollars annually, or zero to nine dollars monthly, depending on how you want to refer to that. So, this concludes my presentation. Uh, tonight's action requires council to approve the assessment role as certified by the Grayson Appraisal District, and to levy the ad valorem taxes for the City of Denison Tax Year twenty twenty-five.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Ms. Osobod? This is a public hearing. Those who, uh, choose to make statements in favor of or against the tax rate are welcome. The public hearing is now hope, open. Is there anybody, uh, who cares to speak again on this matter?
You should have a card.
I do.
Thank you again, my name's Lee Thornton, eight one five Waterloo Lake Drive, Denison, Texas. The passage of the budget, um, in speaking, I said it didn't adequately fund, um, the city employees and particularly the fire department, which was essentially decimated. I understand that most of those cuts came from what is to come, the hiring of the twenty-one firefighters, et cetera, but as you heard, um, our safety and, and protection and the adequacy of having a good fire department is essential. Since this budget is passed, um, and we're talking about a tax rate increase, um, I would encourage and exhort...
Excuse me, there's not, that budget did not include a tax rate increase.
That is correct. You are correct.
It, it's the same as last year, point seven one two zero three four.
So, this is, this is, presentation is simply a moot point, as far as this budget's concerned.
Well, um, we, we appreciate your comments, and we appreciate you as a citizen. Uh, I know you serve on the, the Fireman's Pension Board, we appreciate that service, and, uh, we appreciate everyone in this audience tonight, uh, fire, rescue, police, everyone. It's totally appreciated by the city. Uh, it sucks when we don't have enough money to do everything we want to do, and that's the hard part that the council is, is tasked with.
Yep. Uh, therefore, I exhort the, the council to look into alternate ways to fund our fire department, uh, not necessarily for the twenty-one, for the new station, but to adequately fund and staff our fire department, uh, and compensate them accordingly, so that we can retain and attract those quality firefighters that are necessary for our community. I appreciate you.
All right, thank you very much, Lee, we appreciate you.
Can I ask a point of clarity? The budget we passed did not include the, uh, the issues for the fire department's compensation and the hiring. This point we are doing now would be an, uh, adjustment to that, so we have now, as council, the ability to vote. In the event that the Safer Grant does not take, uh, does not get qualified or, uh, granted, uh, you still have to hire new folks, yes? Just, you're not going to hire twenty-one all at once.
If we want to, if we want to at least ride three up at every station, this is, we have to hire at least three more.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood, because the question was, we, this is moot, and I think the answer to that is not necessarily. That's the discussion we're having now. The, the follow-up question would be, if we end up giving, voting for an increase and then the grant does not take place, uh, then what? That's just surplus cash to go somewhere else? Okay, thank you.
Because the Safer Grant is up in the air, and I'm glad that we have a good probability of getting that grant, for sure, um, we need to plan for a worst-case scenario and still accomplish what we need to accomplish. If the funding comes in, man, we're, we're in much better shape. Uh, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, please come up.
Kurt Chaski, fourteen nineteen, Westwooder, uh, a comment and then a question. I just want to make sure I understand, thirty-six years in the military, you got to keep it simple for us. We passed a budget that is a zero-growth budget, zero-tax increase budget. Should we approve this percent increase, five cents, or what, up to five cents, we would then have to go back and adjust the budget for the tax increase?
Yes, sir.
So, there would be essentially a relook at the budget, to which we could relook at everything else again.
Yes, sir.
The comment was, again, as a military base commander, ISO one is a very important thing. Even on a government installation, the, the insurance rates are so very, very, very important, and as a citizen here in Denison, a question that I've been having is, why are all the fire hydrants along Morton and Gandy and across Maurice now covered with plastic bags? So, you can't, the fire departments can't go in there. I think I now understand why, and I would certainly like to get those covered before I have to go to my insurance company and tell them I don't have a fire hydrant by my house anymore. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comment. Any other questions or comments for council? Sorry, we're going to close the public meeting. Any other questions or comments for council? If not, uh, there is, is there a motion to...
Well, I'll, I'll, before I make a motion, um, uh, I will make a comment. This is, uh, I've been on council now for four and a half years, um, and I'll admit this is probably the, the most difficult decision I've had, I've had to make in my four and a half years, uh, because, uh, it is, I, I see the needs of the city, I love this city, I see the needs of the fire, uh, the firemen, and, uh, it's, it's very difficult. I also, um, represent those citizens of our community that have to pay these taxes. Um, last year, we did a six-cent increase, and, um, I think the citizens understood, uh, based on the feedback what we got, we, they understood why we had to increase it. This year, however, um, spoke with many, many citizens and constituents, and they, they are having a hard time understanding why we're having to raise it again, and, um, it's, we are, in our area, we have one of the highest property tax rates, and unfortunately, we're one of the lowest socioeconomic areas in, in our area, too. So, this impacts, um, significantly our citizens, and, so, we're in a tough spot. Um, and, you know, my, uh, it's, my thought is, unfortunately, uh, I think we're going to have to buckle up for a year, unfortunately, and, and I hate doing it, but, uh, we can relook at the budget next year, but I have a hard time telling my constituents and citizens that, yeah, we're going to raise another five cents on you, even though we're one of the highest, highest, we have one of the highest property tax rates in the area, and we're not, our citizens are not as wealthy as they are in Sherman or other areas in this area, so, that's my comment.
All right, thank you.
And so, I'll, I move, I move that the property tax remain the same, tax rate of zero point seven one two zero three four, which is effectively a zero percent increase in the tax rate.
Second.
We have a motion by councilman Courtrite, and a second by... We have a motion by Councilman Courtright, and a second by Councilman Thomas, is that correct? Any other discussion? All right, we'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
As I state your name, please stay, state yes or no. Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Courtright?
Yes.
Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Crowley?
Yes.
Councilmember Massey?
No.
Councilmember Redwine?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, six to one. All right, so we'll now move to item number six, items for individual consideration. Ms. Alsova, we're looking for a report to ratify property tax reflected in the 2026 budget.
The budget adopted earlier this evening, again, was based on the current tax rate of .712034. Even with no tax increase built into that budget, the budget does raise more property tax revenue, not the taxes, but the tax revenue, on the same properties from the prior year budget, $640,000, or $617, so $640,617, which is a 4.3% increase. It also raises an additional $624,568 from new property added to the tax roll. And state law requires a separate vote by council to ratify this tax revenue increase, since the budget raises more property tax than it did the prior year. So therefore, staff recommends approval of the total tax increase, which is $1,265,185. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Now, Lori, that amount is not reflected in the budget we approved earlier, correct?
No, it is, it is, yes. We just have, there needs to be a separate vote to approve that increase. Again, it's not a tax increase, it's just, this budget generates more revenue than the par budget.
And that's because of two things, a little bit of new construction and a little increase in valuations.
Yes, correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Mayor moved to ratify the tax increase reflected in the budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Thomas, a second by Councilmember Courtright. Any other questions or comments? And we'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
As I state your name, please say yes or no. Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Courtright?
Yes.
Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Crowley?
Yes.
Councilmember Massey?
Yes.
Councilmember Redwine?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Moving to item 6B, report and hold a discussion, take action on approving a build-designed, custom-turnkey restroom for Hudson Park with Restrooms Facilities Limited, Inc., and this is a carryover from last week, so will we open this item for discussion?
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Yep, thank you.
So as you just stated, at our last meeting, the item was tabled as we awaited a more detailed cost breakdown from the vendor to include things like design versus construction with even further breakdowns. During the interim of trying to receive that information, we explored alternative paths, and were identified with a very promising opportunity to utilize a previous restroom design that we have used in the past. This will allow us to eliminate design costs entirely, in addition to lowering the overall costs of the project through construction. Secondarily, it allows us to standardize infrastructure, providing a more cohesive and professional look. Given this new information, staff are recommending and respectfully requesting that council deny the current option being presented to you. And with further exploration, we will return to council with a new proposal for consideration at a later date.
All right.
I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Is there a motion to deny the Restrooms Facility Limited bid?
I make a motion, Mayor, to deny the restroom facility bid.
I second.
We have a motion by Councilman Massey, a second by Councilman Courtright, to deny that bid, and we'll ask Amanda to come back to us in a future date with another plan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I want to thank everyone, these are not fun meetings, but we will be working diligently to see if we can make improvements on what we've done tonight. And I thank each and every one of you for coming and spending your last hour and 15 minutes with us. So thank you very much, and at this time, this meeting is adjourned.